Welcome, everyone. Welcome to Beverly School Committee's Committee of the Whole. Today is Wednesday, August 25, 2021. We are meeting in a hybrid model today using a remote meeting application that is provided at no cost to our district with captioning. And BevCam is broadcasting us on a number of their avenues this evening, including their YouTube government channel and Channel 99 to allow for public access to the open portions of this meeting. I will note that we will be going into an executive session very briefly, and at that time, members of the public will be asked to step out of the library, and we will welcome you back in once we end the executive session. We're able to use this hybrid platform this evening. Just a moment, letting a few more folks into the room. On June 16, 2021, the governor signed Chapter 20 Order Acts of 2021, which, among other things, this bill allows public bodies to continue to hold meetings in remote fashions until April 1, 2022. Also, it's notable that Beverly had adopted remote meeting protocols for its boards and commissions. The Act specifically suspends the need to have a quorum and the chair physically present and asks the body to use technical methods to allow for safe public access. We would encourage viewers to use the BevCam streaming options this evening if possible. I will note that we do have a quorum present, and the chair is present tonight. Tonight is a Committee of the Whole meeting. This means we do not have an agenda item for addressing the body. We do have the executive session planned, but we will be returning to open session after. Joining us today are members of the school committee, various members of the district administrative and leadership teams. And what I will do next is do a full roll call of attendance because this platform sometimes does not show all of the participants. So we'll just make sure we get that for the record, as well as confirm that those participating remotely can both hear and see us. Please do remember that any audio or video that you supply on this platform will become part of the meeting record, and as such, we ask you to use your mute functionality to prevent background noises. So let me now conduct the roll to confirm that everyone is marked present and that you can hear and see me if you're on the remote platform. Present this evening, we have Canaan McKenzie.
Here.
Karen Robinson.
Here.
John Malady.
Here.
Kimberly Quelo.
Here.
Lorinda Visnick.
Here.
And Rachel Abel. We also have Dr. Suzanne Turocek.
Here.
Ms. Donna Bergeron.
Here.
Dr. Dorothy Flaherty.
Here.
Remotely participating, we have Jean Sherburne, and she's confirmed her audio for us. We also have remotely Dr. Andre Morgan.
Here.
And present in the room is Ms. Erin Brown.
Here.
Okay. I think I did Dr. Flaherty, yes?
Bethany.
And Bethany's plan is cam, sorry. I was like, okay. I can't hear you. And the mayor has just arrived. We'll let him find his seat and confirm our other participants that are joining us remotely. We have Principal Amy Blanchard, Principal Julie Smith. In person, I thought I saw Principal Lisa Oliver, but she may have just stepped out of the room again. We have Principal Betty Taylor participating remotely.
Megan Hart.
Here, remotely.
Remotely.
Oh, there she is. Okay, so we have Principal Megan Hart. And let me see, Christina Lille participating remotely, Dana Krujshank participating remotely. I think I'm a little out of practice, everyone. Let me stretch my screen here. Okay. I think that seems to cover all the participants online. Of course, I'm also online. Dr. Turocek's online, and Dr. McKenzie is also online, just for the ease of the meeting. Jody Elder here as well. I wrote that down. And some members of the public are parents. Thank you. Okay. Our first order of business is now the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I could ask Ms. Quelo to lead us in the pledge this evening, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. Okay. Our next order of business is the approval of meeting records. We have three sets of records that were included in your packet. These include May 19, a Committee of the Whole, June 30, that was our Committee of the Whole retreat, and July 29, Committee of the Whole, the open session portions. Would we like to take these individually or as a group? I'll take a motion for either to approve.
I'll make a motion to take them as a group.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson and Ms. Visnick, for the motion and the second. Were there any corrections or edits? All those in favor? We don't have to do a roll call because we're all physically present. Seven to zero. Thank you. We will make those our official records. And next, I will turn it over to Dr. Turocek for our school opening and district updates.
All right. Thank you very much. I am going to share my screen with all of you. I think I am. Where did it go? Oh, yeah, I'm in Zoom. I keep forgetting. So I'll take that. All right. So it seems like we haven't done one of these in a while. Welcome back, everybody. So I do have my report organized via Google Slides, and I will be walking you through the two agenda items that we have tonight. Actually, they blend into one, into the report for the school opening and district updates as to what that means for us. I actually want to begin by walking you through the guidance that we were receiving through the course of the summer. We did spend the summer monitoring and getting guidance from various agencies and groups, and so it began pretty much on July 30. We got our first real guidance issued to districts to begin our planning process for the 2021 school year. There were several key messages in the guidance that we received, but the first and, I think, most impactful was the decision that all students in all districts and schools would be required to be in-person, full-time, five days a week. And that, in essence, removed the option of remote learning, which is something that we had utilized in the past school year. But the real goal for all of us was to have kids in school, in-person school, and to get them there and to keep them there. So our goal throughout this whole planning process has been to make sure that we get our kids in school and that we keep them there. The guidance recommended masking at the time in K-12 schools, but it also stated that the Department of Ed and the DPH would continue to monitor and update those masking requirements as they knew that the data may change. They recommended some robust planning be put in place for testing, which would be instrumental to the safe return to school, and announced a partnership between DESI and the Office of Health and Human Services that would continue to provide services around testing at no cost to the district. They told us that they would be creating new protocols that would be developed for responding to COVID-19 scenarios. In other words, giving us pretty clear, detailed instructions as to what to do if there's a case present in school, how to respond, how to do some contact tracing and that sort of thing. And then they, everywhere, everyone, throughout the summer, in all guidance that we got, supports the use of vaccine as the primary mitigation in all of our school settings. So this was the guidance that we received on the 30. We then received a follow-up to that guidance on August 13. And in this, they previewed their new COVID-19 testing programs that were going to be offered through the schools, and they updated the quarantine response protocol. So in particular, there was a review of COVID symptoms, and we will continue throughout this year, as we did last year, working with our families as partners, with caregivers to monitor their children for symptoms and ask that they keep them home if they are not well, as well as staff monitoring themselves for symptoms. They provided a definition of a close contact and a list of exemptions so that if you are identified as a close contact, it exempts you from the need to take part in a testing program or quarantining, and it aligns with some of the guidance from the CDC. They also outlined three testing mitigation measures that would be available to districts. I'm going to describe all of these in further detail as we go on. On August 20, we got a press release from Commissioner Riley. He held a press conference announcing that, as I had said, they were going to continue to monitor the data, and in light of the data that was coming forth, he was going to go to the Board of Education, which has the legal responsibility to give him the authority to mandate masks in all indoor public settings. That board met on August 24, and by a vote of nine to one, they granted him that authority. So he issued, to issue that mask mandate. So then on August 25, which was today at around four o'clock, we received, consistent with that authority, and after consulting to medical experts, he issued the following: that effective immediately, public school students age five and above and staff in all grades would be required to wear masks indoors in schools. Masks are not required when outdoors, and all visitors are also expected to wear a mask in school buildings. So that brings us to kind of where we are today, and I'm going to walk through some of the implications this has for us in Beverly and sort of the interpretation of the requirements as we'll be applying them for back to school. So for a mask requirement, again, masks are mandated for all public school students, educators, and staff through at least October 1, and that is to ensure that schools fully reopen safely, and it provides more time for more students and educators to get vaccinated. After October 1, the commissioner's policy would allow middle and high schoolers to lift the mask mandate for vaccinated students and staff only if the school meets a certain vaccination rate. It was identified as 80% of students and staff in a school building being vaccinated, and at that time, even unvaccinated students and staff would still be required to wear masks. This mandate does include exceptions for students who cannot wear a mask due either to medical conditions or behavioral and disability needs. The mask requirement applies when students and staff are indoors and at school, except when they're eating, drinking, or during mask breaks. Masks should cover an individual's nose and mouth. The student's mask or face covering is to be provided by the student's family. Mask and face coverings for staff will be provided by the district. The district will also supply disposable face coverings for any individual who arrives at the building or tries to board school transportation without one. Students and staff who cannot wear a mask for medical reasons or students who cannot wear a mask for behavioral reasons are exempt from the requirement. Face shields may be an option for students with medical or behavioral needs who are unable to wear masks or coverings. Transparent masks is also suggested for teachers and students in classes for deaf or hard of hearing students or our speech. For example, our speech therapists utilize them often in their speech therapy classes. I wanted to share with you, I did hand out to each one of you a hard copy of the mask protocol. This is the mask protocol, whoops. This is the mask protocol that we developed last year. I went through and made a couple of changes just to indicate that the masks would now be for indoors, but this is just a reminder, this is something that we have already worked together. We spent a good deal of time working in our teams and our collaborative groups last year identifying some of the requirements. So sort of what is a mask? What are the requirements of masking? So the appropriate wearing of cloth face coverings by anyone accessing indoor spaces in our school buildings, on our buses, or in our health offices. Students will be required to wear a mask indoors at all times except when eating, drinking, or a specifically provided mask break at the direction and discretion of the instructor. Face covering should meet the following criteria. These are criteria that were determined by the CDC. We worked through this list, and will be, my recommendation is we'll be continuing with the same criteria. So they would reach above the nose, below the chin, cover the mouth and nostrils, fit snugly but comfortably against the side of the face, be made with at least two layers of breathable material, be secured with ties or ear loops, and reusable masks must be laundered and dried without damaging the material or shape. So there's a little graphic that shows a little bit about what that looks like and how to wear it. Transportation, we know, federal requirement that all students and staff will be required to wear a face mask during transportation on a school bus or van. That is a federal requirement, and students will have to have their face mask properly covering the nose and mouth, and must remain on throughout the whole transport to school. There's one more area around mask refusal. This is for students who, during the school day, attempt to remove their mask. The Department of Ed requires that we have some progressive steps that we take for mask refusal within our school buildings, and that we have outlined that. We did this work last year. This was part of our reopening plan that we went before. So you can read here, basically, it is appropriate by age. It walks through a number of steps to encourage a student to put their masks back on before we get to any other areas. Definition of what a mask break is. A mask break may occur throughout the day. If feasible, they should occur when the windows are open or when students are outdoors. As a reminder, we do have meals and outdoor recess that provides built-in mask breaks for students and staff. We are also in Beverly heavily invested in providing outdoor learning experiences for kids, so there will be opportunities when they would be outside for some of their learning, particularly at our elementary schools. Masks may be removed indoors when necessary to participate in electives. This is a change from last year. We are able to get our band students and our choral students working, and so when using wind instruments in band, they will be allowed to remove their masks. They do ask us to consider, and we have in Beverly done this, some additional mitigation such as their instrument masks, which we have provided to our band students so they have slits and they can put their instruments in and use them that way. Again, as everything, they're asking that you continue to utilize all other measures that you can think of. Athletics. In our athletics, masks will be required for any sports-related activity for student athletes and coaches when indoors, in alignment with the guidance provided by the MIAA. In the fall season, volleyball is our only sport that participates indoors, and so volleyball will be required to wear masks throughout their matches. However, student athletes, when they enter into locker rooms or when they enter into indoor spaces following a match outside, they will be required to put a mask on. So they will need to do that. They provided an update on monitoring for COVID systems. So as we have in the past year, we're going to continue to rely on the support of our parents and guardians to help us monitor their children for symptoms and to keep them home if they're not well. The guidance for what to look for has been updated to sort of provide clarity. We really hope that we've all learned a little bit more. I think if you look at my list, the top four symptoms, those are symptoms that are clearly aligned and identified with COVID-19: a fever of 100 degrees Fahrenheit or higher with chills or shaking chills, difficulty breathing or shortness of breath, loss of taste or smell, and muscle aches and body aches. Those are pretty significant symptoms. The following items on the list, while sometimes associated with COVID, aren't always necessarily indicative of COVID. More importantly, to take a look at those symptoms if they're in combination with other symptoms, and that's the cough, sore throat, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, headache, fatigue, nasal congestion, or runny nose. And so one of the things we hope to do this year is have a better sense of how to make sure that students, that we're able to identify students with COVID-19 and also those who don't actually have COVID-19. That leads us to sort of the close contact tracing and quarantine protocols that were developed. First, the definition of a close contact has not changed. We continue to rely on the CDC definition, which says that close contacts are defined as individuals who have been within six feet of a COVID-19 positive individual while indoors for at least 15 minutes during a 24-hour period. At-risk exposure begins 48 hours. So that means that if you have been near a person who is identified as positive in the 48 hours prior to when their symptoms exist, that's the timeframe that we begin at. This definition hasn't really changed, I think with the exception of the while indoors. However, there have been some exemptions that are now in place. It's the result of the vaccinations that have taken place. It's a result of some of the science that is guiding us that, you know, if we have some other mitigation strategies in place, it can help us. So close contacts who are exempt from quarantining, and this again aligns with what the CDC has provided us, are asymptomatic, fully vaccinated close contacts. So if you are fully vaccinated and you're asymptomatic, you are exempt from the quarantine protocols. What they have identified as classroom close contacts, so provided that both individuals are fully masked and at least three feet apart, those individuals are also exempt from quarantine and testing. Bus close contacts, so if you're riding a bus and you're wearing a mask and the windows are open on the bus, and I assure you, our windows will be open on our buses, then, and you will be exempt from testing and quarantine. And then finally, anyone that's identified as a close contact that has had COVID-19 in the past 90 days and has recovered and remains without COVID-19 symptoms. So those are all, these are all exemptions that are going to help us in terms of the amount of contact tracing that took on last year versus what we will need to do this year. It's much less complex, and I think it will be really helpful. We will be following all of the testing and quarantine response protocols as they have been delivered. Our administrative leadership team and our school nursing staff will or have been trained. Jody Elder is our new nurse leader. She's here in the audience tonight, and she will be working through and making sure that all of the, there is a good deal of training that comes along with some of the testing protocols that we're going to have in place, and she will be assuring that all of the people that are in charge of that are trained. So I've been referencing a COVID-19 testing program. It's sort of a new idea. It involves a variety of testing options, and we will be participating in some of them. They've taken those tests, and they've broken them down into two categories. The first category is diagnostic testing, and the second category is the routine COVID pool testing. So under the diagnostic testing, we have the opportunity for symptomatic testing, which means that individuals who present symptoms while at school, if in the third-period English class you begin to not feel well and you go to the nurse's office, we will have the opportunity in that case, with parental consent, to offer a binax-now rapid antigen chest right there in the health office, which will give us, within 15 minutes, results as to whether or not the individual is showing as a positive COVID. And so please, this does not mean that you would send your sick child to school to be tested. We still need you to keep your child home if they're sick. This is for students who develop symptoms through the day. We hope that it avoids some of those stomach aches and headaches that we were sending kids home for last year very quickly because we were in fear of whether or not it was a COVID symptom, for us to be able to rule that out and either have them stay or go home and not have to then search for a test out in the community once they've gone. The second diagnostic test that we have available to us is a test-and-stay, is what they're calling it, and this is something that we can use. So if, for example, that student that reported to the nurse's office was a positive, we could immediately identify close contacts that that person had been with and provide them with that rapid antigen testing right on the spot. It also allows, and they can remain in school as long as that test is negative. We would administer that test for five consecutive days to that student, and each day that they return and are negative, they can remain in school. So it eliminates a number of students being out on quarantine for the fear that they were a close contact at school. This applies only to students who are identified as close contacts at school, not to community contact. If they're identified by the Board of Health that they're a close contact, they would need to follow the regular quarantine schedule. That was, if they are fully vaccinated, then they don't need to quarantine, and they can come back to school. But if they are not vaccinated, they would need to follow all of the protocols that are in place now for quarantining. We also have available to us routine COVID pool testing. We did participate in pool testing in the spring at both the middle and high school, so we're familiar with it. We are once again enrolling in the program so that we have those available to us. We don't intend on beginning the testing at the start of the school year. We're going to delay and postpone that, but we want to be primed and ready to implement that pool testing if, in fact, we had a need. One of the challenges that we ran up against last year, it's a voluntary program. Our participation was kind of low, and we didn't exactly, I don't think, experience the positive mitigation that it was designed to have. So we're going to, but we don't want to not be able to do it. A lot will depend on what happens in the direction that the data goes for the virus. So we are eligible to provide it. We will be trained to provide it. We will have the resources to do it, and we'll be able to implement it whenever we choose. So again, and you'll hear me say this every meeting, every time, we understand that the primary and best mitigation strategy against the spread of COVID-19 is vaccination. We are really committed to work with our families in Beverly to make sure that they have access to the vaccines. Currently, our pediatric vaccination rates, and this was as of August 14, and this was for students who had received one dose. So this doesn't mean they're fully vaccinated rates. These are rates of students who have received at least one dose, and we have it broken down. Those students who are ages 12 to 15, 72% of our children in Beverly have received one dose. In our ages 6 to 19, only 54% have received one dose. So I will say that's a relatively low percentage for the North Shore. We have neighbors around us who are well over 85 and 90%. We really want to do some work. We really want to work hard to make sure that our families are coming out for vaccines. And so one of the things that we're standing up is some mobile vaccination clinics. We held one today at the high school, and I don't have many results from that because I haven't checked, but we will also have one again tomorrow. We will also have the opportunity to bring these mobile vaccine clinics back to the district, first for their second dose. They will be back at school, but we will also, you know, work very hard to bring them whenever we can. We do want to work toward that goal of 80%. That at least gives us the opportunity to reconsider the mask mandate in a building that has 80% vaccinated staff and students. So this is something that we're going to continue to really work on education for our families and provide some access.
Thank you. I'm curious about where the vaccination rate numbers are coming from.
Great question. All of the, anybody, there's a dashboard called the MIIS. I think I got that right. And we have access to the rate, to the actual vaccination numbers for the students that live in Beverly, and they are provided to us from that.
It is also publicly available.
Oh, is it?
It is publicly available. I'll share the link after the meeting.
Is that from, I'm just trying to think about, if a student gets a vaccine outside of the North Shore, it can report that? Let's say they go to Children's Hospital in Boston.
I'm going to defer to Jody because she's here, but where does that data come from? You have to come up here and talk to the microphone.
Okay. Just push this? Okay. So the data comes from anybody who has been vaccinated in the state. It is a state database. So if they're vaccinated at Children's or a local pediatrician or in the Berkshires when they were, you know, it doesn't apply, but for a college student or a visiting family, it's imported into the Massachusetts website. So it encompasses anyone in Massachusetts, and that links with our portal here at school.
And links to, I suppose, their home address or school district.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
So I would assume that links back to home address or school district?
Correct, to home address.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Jody.
Sure.
I don't think she knew she was going to get put on the spot, her first visit to the school committee.
Break the ice.
I know, I know. We also are tracking and following the seven-day data for Beverly. This is summer data. This does not really, this is not school data. This is not members of the school community. This is just general data for Beverly. You can see why probably many of the guidance was tightening as we were going through the summer. Our rates were rising exponentially throughout the summer, and we will continue. So we will be providing our, we will set up back up our COVID dashboard on our website as we had last year. We will provide vaccination, updated vaccination information on there, and we will provide the updated data for Beverly. And so, you know, this is just one of the other things that we're going to keep in mind as we go along. I also want to say, we meet regularly. We have a group, a COVID, a Public Health COVID Task Force. So we have been meeting with that group. That encompasses our public health team and our district physician and administration from the district. So we'll continue to have all those conversations as we go along. So what does this, oh, sorry.
Ms. Robinson?
And I just wanted to clarify with, so 12- to 15-year-olds, that includes all children in Beverly, not just children who are attending Beverly public schools? That includes anyone?
Beverly residents in that age category.
Right. And it also, and 19-year-olds, those are.
Could be freshmen that are going off to college.
Could be freshmen of college or whatever. Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
We are working on the availability of a breakdown by grade level, and we have the, we began that process, and we have some preliminary data, but not enough to actually bring forward this evening. But that, we will probably, when we put it on the website, have it extrapolated by grade level, so there'd be some general information about who has the vaccine and who doesn't.
And that would be by grade level of all, again? It wouldn't be our students?
That would be our students.
Yeah. Oh, good.
Grade level in Beverly public schools.
Okay. Thank you.
We're working on putting that together in a table form that can go onto the website. So I guess, what does that look like? So, I guess, what does that look like for us here in Beverly? We will continue to follow the DESI guidelines for our safe return to school. Masks will be required in all indoor spaces in our public school buildings. A testing plan has been established to provide our health professionals the ability to provide that timely testing. Again, this will be through parent consent. We do not plan to tuck this into the first day of school forms that you get, so it will come under a separate cover, but we will, we do hope that parents will fill out the consent form. It will allow us to do that on the spot. Rapid testing, you will avoid driving around from clinic to clinic to try to figure out where you can get a quick test. I know there may be more specific questions. I'll entertain them at the end about the test and stay program, but parental consent is certainly something that will be required for that. Our mobile vaccination clinics have been set up, and we will continue to, we'll set them up as often as we need to to get as many kids as we can vaccinated. Our nurses and health providers are trained in the use of the rapid antigen test, so we'll be, we know we can safely administer those, and we are poised to implement the pool testing if we determine that there's a need for it. Again, these are the things that are remaining from last year. I think the great news is that there are a number of things that we are no longer needing to do, but there are still a number of protocols that we believe we need to keep in place in order to make our schools safe and to continue to eliminate the, any transmission within schools. So, first and foremost, if you are sick, stay home. We will say that over and over again. We have had great cooperation with our families in Beverly throughout this pandemic, and I look forward to the continued partnership that we have with them on that. We know that masks must be worn on buses and vans, and they must be worn in the health office. That's a federal requirement, and they need to be worn indoors until further notice, and that is the DESI requirement. Hand sanitizer and cleaning supplies will be available in each classroom throughout the building. We have a new director of buildings and grounds who I hope to introduce to you soon. He is well aware and is working hard to make sure, both with Mike Collins, that we have all of the supplies. We do have them in the district. We're going to be distributing the building and the classroom levels, so all of the teachers in classrooms will have what they need. We're going to continue with our nightly cleanings, and we also will continue with the high-touch areas being cleaned throughout the day, which is something. Additionally, we're going to, and we ask you at home to continue to encourage frequent hand washing. I think, you know, there are many things through the pandemic, I think, that we all realized were really good practice, and hand washing is one of them. We want to make sure that continues, and so our teachers are making plans throughout the day to make sure that they, that that's available in their classrooms. Maintain our attention to the three-foot distancing where possible. We really are thoughtful in our setup of our classrooms to make sure that we're providing that three-foot distance. If you remember, last year, we had committed to a four-and-a-half, half-foot distance. That doesn't mean that at every moment of the day, they're going to be three feet apart, but we're looking at the physical setup to try to make it be that it begins that way and then, but we also want to allow some return to normal classroom movement within the, within the classroom. Again, opportunities for outdoor lunch and mask breaks. We are looking into, at the high school, getting some picnic tables for the areas outside, additional outside seating for lunch for students. We're investigating the tents. We don't think we need one quite as big as we had last year. It took up quite a bit of space and wasn't as utilized as we thought, but looking at that. Our middle school has a plan for more lunches so that there's spacing, that this distancing is available for kids. In our elementarys, they're just eating outside no matter what, so they're taking those buckets out and they're eating out there. So, we're encouraging outdoor learning opportunities as we did this past year, and we know that that will continue. So, those are the protocols that will remain in place. I received a question from a couple of you and from some other constituents around student absences. Again, my first bullet on things that would remain in place is if your child is sick, keep them home. We want to continue with that. We recognize that parents and students have been asked to monitor to keep their students at home when they exhibit possible COVID symptoms. In the event of a COVID-related absence, the parent should notify the school about the student's absence, and we will document it as such, and the school's health office will be able to follow up with the family because we think a key strategy last year was being able to have our nurses work with families when, in fact, there was some instances. I think they, there are questions that they have. We have our COVID mail, email for questions, where people consenting, questions that they have, but we, you know, we have, our, our school nurses are really well positioned to be helpful and make that work. The documented absence will not be counted toward the high school failure due to absence policy. If you have a high school student, you may or may not be aware of the FA. That shows up sometimes on a report card. I want to clarify what that is for some of you, and I do have some information about it. The policy is really a mechanism that we use to deter student absences. And, you know, while student absences sometimes are from genuine illnesses, sometimes they're a result of truancy, they can be tardiness or early dismissals or whatever. So, we do ask teachers in a course, if the student has more than two absences, that they make parents aware of their child's attendance in that class. We will be, if it is a documented absence due to COVID, we will not be counting that as an absence in the course. So, that's just to be clear. We certainly, it seems, it is sort of a challenging balance between needing to keep your child home if they're sick and us saying, but they need to be in school. So, we want everyone to be really thinking about that. However, there's a couple of things that I would just encourage everyone to remember. We run on a Pride Panther schedule. We're going back to our Pride Panther schedule, so if you've missed three days, that means it's been on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or, you know, throughout the course of a quarter. We also run a block schedule, and it's an 84-minute block, so those three absences are actually equivalent to six absences in another schedule for another high school. We did check around because I actually said, that sounds kind of harsh. Do we really have to do that? And we got, collected some data. So, we're really in line with, if not actually more lenient than some of the district policies that are around us. But I do want to be clear that if you have a student absence that you've home because they're of COVID-related concerns, then you're going to contact the school, and the school will, that will not count towards the absences for that FA. And I'm, when I get to questions, I'll be happy to answer any other questions that everybody has. I want to talk a little bit about special education. Our special education services will be provided as outlined in the currently signed IEP. As in the past, our special education liaisons and service providers will communicate to families their schedule of services for their child sometime in the beginning of September. We did want to let everyone know, IEP meetings will continue to be held virtually unless an in-person meeting is requested. Another of the silver linings that we found, the feedback that we got from parents and families is some of these virtual meetings were really very beneficial because they were much more able to attend. We found that attendance was improved, and so we will continue that. Our communication will be continued, will continue electronically. We, in the past, prior to the pandemic, spent a lot of time mailing out paper copies and more paper copies. We have, we work within DocuSign now, and the documents can be signed electronically through the DocuSign platform. Paper copies are certainly available to anyone that requests somewhere and wants them, but our, our default would be to do the electronic signature on those IEPs. Some really good news about transportation. Our current transportation numbers, and it's still early, we still have another week before the start of school, are 1,459 students who have registered to utilize our transportation. That includes four runs that we were able to add for out-of-district students that were previously contracted out. We are working really hard to make sure that we can become as efficient as possible, and kudos to Dana. That number is up from, that's an approximate number, 750, but I know we were in the 700 range in the 21, 20, 21 school year. If you remember, that decrease was the result of some restrictions that we had on the capacity of buses. I think there was hesitancy. I'm really happy to say that that 1,459 number is a great number. Prior to the pandemic, I thought this was a nice point of interest. We were at 15, 1543. So, we are inching back close to full capacity on our buses, and I know that that's a welcome announcement for those of you who are concerned about the traffic and the congestion and, you know, all of those things near our schools. So, I would encourage any families that haven't already, that are interested in transportation, to reach out to the transportation office. You can access it through our website and sign up for transportation because we really like to see our kids on buses. It's beneficial for everybody, so. And that is what I have right now, so I'm happy to entertain any questions that any of you have or anything like that.
Thank you, Dr. Trowcek. That was, wow. I'm going to need a copy of the slide deck. Maybe we'll get it up on the website.
It will be on the website. It's always posted on the website, so Donna will take care of that tomorrow.
Wonderful. Ms. Visnick, I saw your hand.
Thank you. I wonder if we might, as a district, consider or reconsider the definition of the close contact. You had a slide up there that said you won't be considered a close contact if you're fully vaccinated, but we know that there are breakthrough cases and that someone who has been fully vaccinated can, in fact, get and then spread the virus. So, although this is the guidance, say, we don't have to consider somebody that was fully vaccinated a close contact, I wonder if we wouldn't want to be more diligent in that area and put such a child in the test and stay program to try to help mitigate possible further spread?
So, I want to clarify that you're still a close contact, but you're exempt from the test and stay program. So, we're not saying that you're not a close contact if you're fully vaccinated, but we're saying that you don't need to be tested because the guidance is that if you're wearing a mask and you're fully vaccinated, the likely, that you don't have, that you don't have to quarantine, you don't have to, the CDC guidance would tell you that. So, all of the guidance that's out there is that fully vaccinated people, once, if they're, if they're identified as a close contact, they're not required to quarantine. They are asked to wear a mask indoors for 14 days, and so they're already wearing the mask indoors for 14 days. So, since we're already meeting that level of, you know, compliance with what even CDC is saying, they're saying you don't quarantine, you don't stay home, you simply need to wear the mask indoors. So, the testing is for the students that are, that would be within, within three feet and not wearing them unmasked or something like that. So, you know, I think we need to think about the load that we put on the nursing staff and the, I mean, the amount of testing that we can manage. I would say that I'm comfortable with the suggestions the way they are, but certainly you all can have a discussion about that.
So, all right, I guess what I'll say is I don't read that bullet that, okay, you were asymptomatic and you're fully vaccinated and you have to keep your mask on. I mean, we're starting with masks on, but.
You have to, so the, this, the guidance is that if you are identified as a close contact, but you are asymptomatic and fully vaccinated, you're exempt from the testing and the quarantine. You would still want to do what they would suggest, which, as a close contact, you would wear a mask indoors. So, you would be wearing that mask indoors wherever you go. That would be the guidance that you're given as a close contact.
I understand that, and I appreciate that. I guess I'm just saying I don't read that up there.
Yeah, it took me a while to kind of, because I kept saying, oh, they changed the guidance. You're not a close contact if you're three feet away. That doesn't mean you're not a close contact. It just means you're exempt if you've been wearing a mask at the time and you're in a classroom space. So, it's an exemption from doing the quarantine the way, the way that it's given. You're exempt from that, just as the CDC says, fully vaccinated adults are exempt from being quarantined if they are fully vaccinated, but they are told that you should wear a mask indoors for 14 days.
And this is specifically inside of our schools?
This is specifically inside of our school.
Not outside close contacts? I think that was one of the important pieces that I heard about. The Department of Health rules still apply if there's a close contact outside of our building.
Outside of school.
Outside of the classroom where we have all the mitigation strategies.
Oh, Dr. McKenzie.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question to that. So, this mask mandate is good through October 1st, so should October 1st come and we do reach our goal of 80%?
It only allows us to reconsider it. It doesn't automatically lift it.
Okay. So, then I'm getting ahead of myself a bit because my thought was, should we reach that magic number? And so, you are a close contact, fully vaccinated, asymptomatic, but are not wearing a mask, then we'd have to revisit, I think.
It could be part of the reconsideration, but all that October 1st says is that it would allow districts to reconsider. It doesn't automatically change it. So, there are a number of districts around us who had already voted to do just recommended, and so now they have, because of this, they have to go backwards, but I think that, you know, that it would, we never had that conversation because we were kind of given this information first. So, I think that if we were to reach 80%, which I would love to, but I'm not, you know, that's, we have a long way to go. If we were to reach 80%, then we would have an opportunity to reconsider what our policies are, and this would include that. You're right.
Thank you.
Mayor Cahill.
Thanks, Madam President. So, along the same lines, I believe I understand that close contacts to an individual who, close contacts to a student who are contacts outside of school, like somebody's two or three best buddies who they've spent a lot of time with away from school. That's not what this is about.
Not about that.
Those, those other children, students would be identified through local contact tracing, and they would be advised by the contact tracer, who is one of our public health nurses for the community.
Quarantining is their option.
And that.
Again, if they are fully vaccinated at that point, the Board of Health will probably say, you don't need to quarantine, you just need to wear a mask indoors for 14 days. I don't speak for them, but that's what, right now, that's what the guidance is, right?
Right. That does sound familiar.
Yeah. So, but if you, if you're exposed on a Saturday at the bowling alley, then you're going to hear from the Board of Health that you were exposed, right? And you're going to, they're going to determine, just like we used to, they're going to say, were you within six feet of anyone? Were you wearing masks? What happened? They're going to go through their process, and they're going to identify close contacts. That this, the test and stay does not apply to contacts outside of school. This is only for close contacts that we identify in a school setting.
Okay. Thanks. And then, my other question has to do with the three feet.
Yep.
I anticipate that in our elementary schools, we're going to be seeing more of what we're used to in terms of sitting on the rug for morning meeting and reading, et cetera, and teacher table and such. So, I can anticipate that there could be those instances where, that's where you might have a close contact who needs to get, go into the test and stay protocol.
It could be. It could be, but I will say, in our principals, we had a long conversation at Leadership, and our principals are speaking with their teachers, we are going to be mindful to keep three feet distance where we can. We really hope they're utilizing those outdoor spaces, particularly as we have some nice weather and, if we have nice weather in September and October and into November. And, you know, we do have, there are ways, so they have little dots that they can put down on the rug that are three feet apart from each other. There are things that we know that we can do and manage in that environment. At the middle and the high school, the desks themselves are all about three feet, so we have a pretty good sense of what, and there's a lot less movement within, within them. So, there's been a lot of conversations about that. Our goal is to, when possible, be three feet apart to kind of eliminate the number of people that are in that position. But you're right, that's a situation that, and then the test and stay would happen, and we would just do a daily check-in, and as long as they're negative, they can stay in school.
Gotcha. And this is not meant as a question. You can feel free to let it land or talk about it if you want, but it does speak to the importance of doing the best we can with our mask breaks and when the kids have snacks and eat meals, to be outdoors and in the best ventilated spaces possible.
Yeah, and the principals are very aware of that. That's, that was the conversation even at the high school that we were having about the use of the outdoor space for lunch, the, you know, opportunities to go out there and that sort of thing, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Are, are we thinking about, just back to the mask breaks, are we thinking about having them inside?
Yep. They're, they're able to have them inside, so if you can, there are many ways that it can be done that, we haven't gotten that far down the road. This guidance came out at 4:00. So, we haven't had a lot of time to dig through exactly what it says about it is, but there, it doesn't prohibit them. Again, that, as I said, we're just in the beginning stages. We haven't, there are a number of things that we still have to think about, but this particular document came out at 4:00 from the Department of Ed, so I haven't had a chance to talk with principals, I haven't had a chance to talk with the teachers and, you know, and the union and all of those things, so.
Right. That's what I was, I was thinking about, just, I just took down some notes as you were talking, that, like, would, are we, are you going to discuss with the principals, et cetera? You know, will mask breaks take place at a specific time for everyone?
Again, those are all, yeah, those are all, and, you know, the definition of a mask break, it can be as little as, I just need to take my mask off for a couple of minutes and put it back on again to, you know, I, I, I hope we're not all the way back to the whole class stands up and walks outside and spends 20 minutes outside breathing fresh air and then come in. I mean, there are other ways that we think we can do it. We're really looking to try to capitalize on some learning time and, and we have that opportunity to do that. So again, I, we haven't worked out the details on that. And, you know, I don't, I will have more information later as to how that works out.
Yeah, I was just thinking about how our middle school and our high school, they weren't in school for a full day last year and...
Yep, but they also didn't have lunch. So there's still, there's now a built-in lunchtime for them. And, and we also, you know, I think, we're all hoping that our days come back to a little bit more semblance of, you know, normalcy, so they won't be sitting in one room all day. If they're seventh and eighth grade, they'll be moving from class to class and they'll be, you know, some of those things, so. Hopefully.
Dr. McKenzie.
Well, I think you probably got to one of the questions I was going to ask next. Given that they're upcoming conversations, even prior to this mandate, I'm guessing there were already plans around lunch?
Mm-hmm.
So where, do you feel like we're comfortable with the lunch?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a slide on lunch and Christina, I apologize. Christina has sent a number of communications out. But I do want you to know, we actually made the decision early in the summer that we were maintaining our bagged lunch so that there is a grab, so that we were taking the lunches and going outside. The elementary principals decided early on they were going to, and we had said, I think through like December 1st or something, or November 1st, that we were going to start the year that way, K to eight. The high school also, I think that Christina and Betty worked out a different access through the lines so that it limits the distance or whatever. And again, the outside spaces at the high school are being prepared so that some can, you can choose. And that sort of was what we ended the year at. There were some choosing to eat inside, there were some people choosing to eat outside at either in the cafe, I call it the cafe area, but there's an outdoor area that was pre-designed for outdoor eating. And then there's an expanded area and we had a tent. So they're thinking about all of those things and working through them. The middle school traditionally had a setup where they had four lunches, two lunches going on in each cafeteria during the day. They've expanded the number of lunches that they're having so that they can utilize that space with less students in it at a time. So they're going to utilize probably still an indoor space, but it's very well-ventilated and they will be spacing the students out more. They'll use that strategy.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional questions for Dr. Trocheck? Oh, Ms. Robinson.
Sorry. I don't know if this is part of this part of your presentation, but do we have any information on the number of cases? And especially on number of breakthrough cases? In Beverly, Salem? Like in hospitalizations or anything for, especially for school-aged children?
I don't have it specified for school-aged children. This is the data that I have been provided by the Public Health. You know, I know these numbers, so I want you to put these numbers in perspective. While, and I think the numbers, what's troubling about our numbers is, I was trying to figure out how to do a graph and I couldn't figure out. It would just show you that it's rising and rising, right? However, the numbers right now are still not back to the May 1st numbers that we had in Beverly, right? So we're still not up as high as we were then and we're certainly not close to where we were in March and April. So however, it's the trend that we're concerned about and what we want to do is stop that upward trend that we have going on. So no, I don't have that specific information.
So from my own research, I'll call myself, the state is reporting the positivity counts, but they're not yet discerning the breakthrough cases or the hospitalizations. It's just the positivity rate. And so that is an area where there are a number of people asking the state to start differentiating, differentiating the data. And I think when we do our district dashboard again, I think that will give us some better data for us to look at our specific community. So I'm looking forward to having more granularity when we can.
And again, we'll be building that dashboard, I think that, you know, based upon whatever becomes available to us. So we'll, we'll work on making that happen, so.
Okay, one final call for questions for Dr. Trocheck before we move on. Okay, thank you, Dr. Trocheck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna, for getting those slides available for, for everyone to digest a bit more. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is just a quick update while I have your attention. There is a form from MAS C. that the district needs to return for our official delegate to the conference, which I'll remind you is happening in November, the first week in November. The delegate conference is on Saturday, November 6th. And I confirmed with Dorothy Presser, our rep, that it would be in a hybrid fashion, so you don't necessarily need to attend the conference in person. In fact, they've actually stopped taking registrations for in-person. They've gone to a waitlist mode because they want to keep the numbers down and encourage some participants to use the virtual option to, you know, lessen the number of members there. So what we need to decide this evening is if someone that's going in-person would like to be a delegate, I could put them in the first position of this form. And then we need to also select an alternate delegate. So I'm just looking for volunteers, basically. I don't know if anyone that's going plans to be there on Saturday and wishes to try the in-person. Ms. Visnick and I participated on the virtual version last year and it was fine. Wasn't ideal. It took maybe three hours of our time. I weeded my garden. I, I was the alternate, so I wasn't even voting. Ms. Visnick represented us in our, you know, desires on the different topics. But I weeded my garden during the conference because it was virtual and I was on mute, so. Any volunteers?
So I have a hotel room and I was planning to attend in person, but I am not officially registered because they closed out, right?
Yep.
So I guess I just want to say that. There's a chance that I'll get to go in person, but there's also a chance that I won't. And, you know, I don't, I, I want anybody who wants to do it. Even if I go in person, you could do it remotely if you were so inspired.
I'll volunteer myself to be an alternate if someone wants to volunteer to be the delegate.
There's another conference I'm trying to attend that weekend. Whether or not it happens, it's too soon to know, so.
Yeah.
That's why I'd be willing to take my turn, but if this other conference happens, that's where I need to be, too.
I would say the benefit is to hear the different perspectives across all the other communities. I think that when we, in our September, our October meeting, we'll decide what our positions are on the different advocacy topics. But I think there's a good benefit to members to hear the positions from Somerville and from Western Mass communities and those who actually are on the advocacy board. But I don't want to force it. Dr. McKenzie?
I just had a comment. I had every intention of going in person, particularly because it would be my first year. But I was anticipating that like some other things I would attend, they're now offering more options to be hybrid.
Oh, you get a...
Sorry, it's, well, it's green. Yeah, whether, whether they'll allow for that delegation to operate differently or if it is an in-person experience only, because I've never attended, so I'm not sure.
Oh, so they, I have confirmed it will be hybrid. So they will have both in-person and online. So they've tested the completely online. Actually, Ms. Visnick and I attended a training, well, a topical, how to spend USR money, basically, and they had... Yeah, and, and they, they did use a hybrid approach and they seem to have worked out the kinks for technology. So it is a robust participation, just like we're doing here tonight with our hybrid meeting. So it, hybrid is totally an option. And as I mentioned, it gave me a lot of time to sit out in my garden weeding as I participated as an alternate.
Well, I'm happy to do it then in that event, but I'm attending not in person. So if that's okay, then yes.
Yep, okay. Ms. Visnick, would you like to be the alternate or am I putting my name down?
I will be happy to be the alternate because I have told you before, I think as the president, you do a tremendous amount. And where I can take some of that burden off of you, I am happy to do so.
Okay. I appreciate the sentiment, Ms. Visnick. Okay, so we will, we will complete the form and we will send Dr. McKenzie as our delegate and the alternate will be Ms. Visnick. And we'll make sure that they have all of the hybrid dial-in information for that event. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. After this rain, we have just so much in the garden. Our next item of business will bring us into executive session. The chair is making a motion right now to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for purposes number seven and three. And to return to open session upon the completion of this executive session. Purpose number seven is to review and approve the July 29, 2021 negotiations committee of the whole subcommittee executive session minutes that were in your confidential packet. And for purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with Beverly Teachers Association Unit B. Those are our administrators. Because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. I do anticipate this to be a very short executive session. People may choose on the remote platform to go back into the waiting room. I will put you there if you don't find the button first. And those members who are joining us in the library, if you just step out into the cafeteria, I will bring you back in in just a few moments. Thank you.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. Oh, yes, we need to vote on that. All those in favor of going into executive session?
Does it have to roll call?
Oh, roll call, yes. Forgot that. Okay, I have a roll call form here. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Dr. Kenan McKenzie?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
John Mulady?
Yes.
Lauren DeVisnick?
Yes.
Rachel Libley, yes, seven to zero. Okay, the chair is stating now that we are moving into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, for purposes seven and three. Bev Cam, if you would, cut us one minute.
[music]
Okay, the time is 8:21. Thank you all for bearing with us while we had that brief executive session. The chair would like to now move that the body approve the memorandum of agreement between the Beverly School Committee and the Beverly Teachers Association Unit B. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor? Seven to zero. I will notify the BTA president this evening that the Unit B contract for, the memorandum of agreement for our collective bargaining agreement for the next three years has been approved. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. We have no other topics that we anticipate discussing, so I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. All those in favor? 8:22. Thank you so much. We are now adjourned. Thank you, Bev Cam, as always. Thank you.